Pasco County Board of County Commission, 10 o'clock meeting of January 14th, 2025. At this time, silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
So merciful Creator, your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of your good gifts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Present.
District 4 Commissioner Yeager.
Here.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 3 Chairman Stark.
Here. Thank you. Okay, so now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered for a WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request that, we request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left, and when your time is up, two beeps will sound and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. And Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do. Our three individuals signed up. We'll start with Nancy Hazelwood, followed by Asia Moore, followed by Lisa Moretti.
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nancy Hazelwood, 34110, a nice place, Dade City. You know, I'm all about the Northeast Protected Area Plan that says we are supposed to have well and septic out there that helps to keep us rural. And it's, if you haven't read the COT plan on it, I would appreciate it if you'd read what it says on the Northeast Rural Area Plan so you're familiar with it. In your packet on the well field, you should have one by Michael and Roberta Stark. They both have backgrounds in water management and twis mud. And I wasn't sure, so that's what I'm passing out to you. I highlighted a couple of places. I've got a bunch of talking points. The R49 is the test well field study for Northeast Rural, and some of this might not be covered in your presentation. I wanted to make sure you're aware of it. Tampa Bay Water's website does not include this, that the site is in the Protected Area Plan, or that it's near the Green Swamp, which supplies three counties with water. I don't know whether Tampa Bay Water just didn't think it was important enough or what, but they missed it. It also, Tampa Bay Water's website also indicates water is for growth in Pasco County. This state makes, statement makes me wonder why the well site is so far north of the county. If the majority of growth is to the south, the protected area in the COT plan has very reduced growth, and we are all in on well and septic. So is this project bring growth to Northeast Pasco? Putting a well this far away from the growth in Pasco County will make the project more expensive. Pipes going from that far north end of the county to the south Pasco will not be cheap. Tampa Bay Water only looked in the Northeast Protected Area for this well site. When it's for the growth of other sites of the county, why not look, why look just in the protected area? Tampa Bay Water does not supply water to Zephyr Hills and Dade City, so it's not for them. If there are problems with Tampa Bay Water's well field supply, they said they'd help the people with water, but that does not include their livestock and maybe their livelihood if you're in another business that needs water. A question at the public meeting about the well field area was, will there be a wastewater treatment plan? The answer was, it's under consideration. My understanding is the test field for this site is not large enough for the accurate detail for a test well, that you need to expand it to a much larger area. And you'll read that in that letter I presented. My off.
Go ahead, 30 seconds more Nancy.
Okay, my understanding is the test field for this site is not large enough, and the county is also renting this site for $10. I was wondering if you've got any more sites we can rent for $10 and make run over with large trucks. My conclusion is this project's major goal is not to supply the rest of the county with water, but to open up the Northeast Rural Protected Area to development. Thank you. Please take this under consideration with your 11 o'clock meeting with Tampa Bay Water.
Thank you, next.
Asia Moore.
It is Asia Moore.
Asia, thank you.
Oh, your guys' microphone does not move.
So we need your name and address for the record.
Yep, got you. My name is Asia Moore. I'm actually a resident in Brooksville, Florida, but I am now vice president of a Florida not-for-profit based out of Pasco County called Florida Uniting Manatee Awareness. I'm coming before you guys today to give you a moment of education. I recently watched one of your guys' workshop videos, and my jaw was on the floor and my stomach was a knot. I spent 15 minutes puking after I heard Jack Mariano make a statement that he didn't know what the nature coast was.
Excuse me, we're not going to say disparaging things about any commissioners.
I didn't, I just said he didn't know what the nature coast was, which is public record. Please go back and watch your meeting. I'm not also addressing him directly, I'm just making a statement in general on what I heard and who I heard it from. So for what, for those of you that don't know what the Florida Nature Coast is, it covers nine counties, from Pasco County to Wakulla County. It's a 980,000 acre stretch known as Florida's Nature Coast. It's a sanctuary to 19 endangered species and Native American archaeological sites. It's also home to over 50 of Florida Springs. If you don't know about Florida Springs, please learn about them. Florida's Nature Coast needs protection now more than ever, as every county in these nine counties has done nothing but overdevelop and put huge strains on our coastal lines. We've allowed people to chop down our softened coastlines to make them hardened, and there's been no plans especially in Pasco County to do anything about softening. While I'll agree with you guys, you guys do need to be able to dredge the existing canals, I will disagree that Leisure Beach needs to be connected to Hudson. I was a Pasco County resident, and the last time I stood before you guys was about 10 years ago, when you guys were doing some stuff on Sun West that I didn't agree with, and well, it stopped. It stopped right there with my push on that. The only thing at that meeting that was true is that Pasco County is the sports coast, but it's not a sport and an activity where people get together and play with balls and sticks. It's the sport of destroying every part of wild Florida and wild nature and not giving two cares about any of the animals that call our coastline home. We have a huge water pollution problem, we have a red tide problem. I don't know if you guys know, but Pasco County's scallop season gets closed down all the time. Thus why Pasco County was included in the aquatic preserve because you guys are failing to take care of it. I understand that you guys don't see what we see on a regular daily basis, that's why I invite each and every one of you to take off your hats if I'm a politician and join us in the real world. I'm gladly willing to take you guys out on a paddle and show you what makes your nature coast special and beautiful and why you need to spend more time protecting it rather than destroying it. Let's talk about Shady Hills Road. As a Hernando County resident and previous Pasco County resident, Shady Hills Road is used by everyone. I don't know whose road studies you're using, but on my way here, as you can see, I'm still shaking because I had a semi truck almost take me out. I'll be sending you guys the dash cam footage for those of you that don't believe me, because I have one now because of an accident that happened in Pasco County. You guys do nothing to take care of that road. It is treacherous to travel at most times of the day, and all it takes is sitting there for one hour to see just how bad it really is. I invite all of you to sit on Shady Hills Road and see how it is, and then ask yourself, if you move to a rural community with two acre minimums, would you want that in your backyard? If not, do something. Thank you.
Lisa Moretti.
Lisa Moretti, 16331, Iola Woods Trail. I'm actually here to talk about a larger issue that I see developing, and that is today, yes, yesterday afternoon, tall timber shows up on the agenda, and I realize that it's for continuance, but we as residents have no opportunity. What if we wanted to object to that continuance? We can't get on the WebEx, we have to come here. We didn't even know about it, we have to change our schedules. And I wish I could say that that was unusual and that that was an anomaly, but I see us developing a habit of bad sharing of information. The last planning commission meeting, the agendas weren't available until 48 hours before the meeting, and then the commissioners didn't get the maps regarding tall timbers until 10 o'clock that morning. This is ridiculous. How do you have open and transparent government that involves citizens and seeks civic engagement if we can't get our hands on the information that we need to know when we need to be there? If you had experts that you were paying to come in, and then all of a sudden, it's continuance. In our land use code, it says that you have to request a continuance five days prior to that event. We aren't, we aren't adhering to that. So I'm wondering why we have rules if we don't follow them. And I'd like to encourage the commission to encourage all of its departments and the county administrator to step up and do things the way that we've all agreed they should be done and give residents a fair seat at the table. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all that I had signed up. I do have one person logged in online, and I believe there is someone who didn't sign up that would like to speak.
Okay, first we'll take inside here. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, please line up. Thank you. Come on up.
Good morning. My name is Anne Marie Winter with the Area Agency on Aging. I actually did sign up, so I'm not sure why my name isn't there, but I want to thank you. I want to thank Pasco County for their partnership with the Area Agency on Aging and the thousands of seniors that we serve together. I want to thank Commissioner Waitman for serving on our board for the last year and for the guidance that he provided for those meetings he was able to attend, and we look forward to having Commissioner Yeager serve as the Pasco County County Commissioner seat on the Area Agency on Aging Board. I also wanted to take this moment, and this was the primary reason I came today, was to thank Commissioner Oakley, who made a very generous private donation of $5,000 to our agency for our unmet needs fund. It was the largest donation that we received as part of our year-end appeal, and it suggests not only his professional, but his personal commitment to the seniors of Pasco County. And I just want to assure him that 100% of his donation will go back out into the community to serve the seniors that we serve. No pressure on anybody else, but I do want to thank Commissioner Oakley for his generosity, and I look forward to working with Pasco County to continue to provide meals to seniors at home and at congregate dining sites, for transportation, to doctor's appointments, and for utility payments, as well as the case management program that you undertook in 2023. So thank you very much. Happy New Year and God bless. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question before you go?
Certainly.
We used to have a congregate dining center on, in the Holiday, next to Southeast Personnel leasing, but then he knocked down that building, so do we still have one over in the Holiday area, do you know?
I know that we're opening, I know that you guys are opening one in L first.
Okay, that's where it's moving to?
But I.
That's good. That's fine.
It's already opened.
Okay, that's all I needed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I know it's unusual during public comment to speak back to a person.
But thank you, Commissioner Oakley.
Anne Marie, I certainly appreciate all that you're doing for the aging and, and the residents in Pasco County and Pinellas County. Your work is greatly needed, and, and you do a great job in what you do for our agents.
It's a team effort, we couldn't do it without everybody involved, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too. Come on up. Name and address, please.
Hi, Daphne Sase, 16230, Creola Drive. I'm here today to discuss the significant challenges that I've been facing since construction started with the Creola Estates. I was informed that a portion of my 35-foot ingress egress for utilities was deeded to Creola Estates. My deed indicates otherwise. Then I called code enforcement due to the work going on day and night. Code enforcement stated it was up for grabs, that it's a public road. This raises serious legal concerns for me. They raised my ingress egress for utilities, at least have the, no permit per the building department. My home is lowest on the street and is increasing the risk of flooding. My driveway has already been washed out when they redid the road for Mary G. They have also put a three-sided retention pond in my buffer in my backyard. They came in and it, and just started tearing everything out on the ingress egress, all the way up to my fence. They didn't leave one tree, one bush, anything in my buffer on the rear of this, the rear of my house or the side of the property. I have no fence in areas of the ingress egress due to the load, loads of dirt washing down into my yard. This has compromised our privacy as well as security. My dogs have gone up there due to them destroying our property and having no fence now in spots. The constant construction noise occurring seven days a week, sometimes in the middle of the night, which I will say has stopped, as well as Thanksgiving Day, has caused significant stress, physical, mentally, and emotionally for me. I'm still responsible for paying my property taxes, which includes 35 feet of the ingress egress for utilities. These people have just been able to do as they please. If I wanted to sell my home, I, I wouldn't be able to at this point. Creola Estates took it upon themselves, or the county has let them, use my ingress egress for utilities without my permission, effectively landlocking their development on purpose when their entrance and exit was to be on Shady Hills Road. Given these circumstances, I'm requesting compensation for the damages to my property as well for the use of my ingress egress. I believe the county's actions or lack of have contributed to this situation. I feel the county is responsible, whether it's permitting, construction without proper oversight, or the lack of addressing my previous complaints. I have met with several people in regards to this and sent emails, and I haven't heard from anybody, and this hasn't been addressed, and there, it's going full steam ahead.
Madam Chair.
Okay, I was gonna have the attorney address it, but go ahead.
I was gonna recommend that one of the attorneys, either David or Jeff, talk with them. I would like, JP Murphy's been out onsite, I don't know if JP's here, but I think David Allen should get fully briefed on this, and I think even a site does it, David, to take a look at it.
County attorney?
My understanding is that you're represented by counsel?
No.
You were represented by counsel?
I had a consultation and he wrote a letter, but I'm not represented, no.
Because our office contacted your lawyer and explained the position, the county's position to him, at that point, he said he was your lawyer. If you've not, if you no longer have a, a relationship with them, we can, we can speak to you, but we can't speak to you if you've got counsel.
Honest to God, I have no counsel.
Then we can, we can have our real estate lawyer contact, contact the woman, but this is a private legal matter between the two property owners.
I'm gonna say I think I should look at it very intensely, and that's why I want David Allen to look at it with our attorney, because I think it's more than that. We have looked at it very intensely. Well, then I would like a discussion with you afterward.
Okay, all right, so some.
I just need her name for the record, please. We didn't catch it.
I didn't think so. What, what's your, can you say your name a little more clearly, please?
Daphne Sase.
Thank you, we just needed it for the record, of course.
Okay, okay, so someone from the county will be getting in touch with you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Daph.
All right, and we have someone online?
Yes, we now have two individuals online. The first one is Ava Russo. We are going to elevate you. Is she ready? And Ms. Russo, you're ready, if you want to state your name, address, and then you can begin your comments.
Looking at your cases.
Okay, so I'll go to the next individual for public comment. It's Julia Bartanek. Just hold on a moment while we elevate you. Ms. Bartanek, you should be good to go. State your name, address, and then you can begin your comments.
Julia Bartanek, 2645 Meadowwood Drive, Newport, Chief, Florida, 34655. Good morning. I want to say that NURPA, the Northeast Rural Pasco Area, is an area of outstanding beauty, agricultural significance, and environmental importance. Being that it is a carbon footprint, I understand that a feasibility study is going to be a failure for a well field. What is that study going to be for? Some of us hope not, for new development. What we need now in Pasco County is a moratorium on new development. There are many that have not been able to get back into their homes yet, or just have recently got into their homes from the hurricanes. We need right now to focus on helping build our resiliency and sustainability because we are only five months away from yet another hurricane season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, if no one else is coming.
That's gonna close, public comment. Oh, we got one more. All right, come on up.
Hi, my name is Krista Howell-Larkin, and I'm here regarding.
Can we get your address too, please?
6421 Brentwood Drive in Zephyr Hills, Florida. We've been displaced from the hurricane, continue to be displaced. When we're gonna return to the home is unknown at this time. You know, we're paying out of pocket $3,000 a month. I'm here just trying to find out where the county is at, improving the infrastructure, in particular, the Zephyr Hills/Silver Oaks area, and where that process is, because as the person before me said, we're five months away from the hurricane season. I've spoke to a few people at the city, and basically, I'm getting nowhere. They're saying that they're working with the county, but I feel it's just kind of pushing aside the, they're just basically just not answering the questions and where we're gonna be at, because we have to make a lot of decisions before we go back into our home if the county's not going to fix the problem. I understand prior to the storm and several years ago, there was money that was allocated to fix the problem, in particular, the Silver Oaks area, and that money was in turn moved to other projects in the county. And in the meantime, you know, we're told that houses are being, and these developments are being built at standards, however, when Silver Oaks, in particular, my personal investment, when that was built, that was at standards. So because standards change doesn't mean that the communities that are already established should be flooded out or should be impacted because of these new regulations. And I'm not sure how many people here have been affected where we've lost a whole storm. In my situation, my father passed away last year. My mother's home, they've lived here for their whole life, she's lost everything. In addition to that, the restoration team that came in to demo our team stole over $20,000 worth of things. This is an outside, outside agency. We're also meeting with them today to find out what they're gonna do to resolve this problem. So it's not just the development, it's the impact on people's actual lives.
You still, you still have another clinic?
Okay, it's the impact on people's lives, and you know, you hear these continued developments, continued developments. Simon's Road, in particular, the, the tennis courts, I mean, there's money aside, they've already started phase two of that. I mean, there's money aside. They've already started phase two of that. The tennis courts look like it's gonna be a two-story tennis court. Where is that gonna run? That's gonna run straight over to where we are. Nothing is being done to update this infrastructure. And it's really frustrating because it seems like nobody cares. And nobody is doing anything except saying, "We're working on it. We're working on it." Well, that's not helping the people that lives there are affected. You know, my mother is 86 years old. She doesn't need to start over. Her and my dad worked their entire lives. And she has lost everything. And it is not okay to sit here and talk about development and do nothing and have no plan for what you all are going to do. And I know it's not just you guys. It's at the state level. There's someone at the state that financed 1-point-something million dollars to the second phase of this tennis development.
So thank you very much, and I am so sorry for your loss and losses. I haven't been back into my home since September 13th, so I understand. I am sure, I am sure that there will be some kind of meeting for the community over here to give them an update on what's going on. And I look forward.
FEMA and insurance, it's just a battle between the two of them. No money is being issued. If you have insurance, you know.
I can tell you that I had flood insurance. I applied right after the hurricane, and I have yet to hear my number. So they are very backed up. But we will try and address some of your questions and the community's questions. We, this county's been through a lot, and we do wanna help all our citizens. So I just.
Thank you.
Take solace in that. Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. And at this time, we will move to resolutions. We have RS1.
If you are here for Arbor Day, please step up to the podium. I will go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 25-095, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring January 17th, 2025, as Arbor Day in Pasco County. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed in 1872 with the planting of over 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Florida has celebrated Arbor Day on the third Friday in January since 1886. And whereas, trees are important in that they remove CO2 and pollutants, therefore reducing the heat island effect. Trees also preserve soil by decreasing stormwater runoff and provide shade and shelter for many animals. And whereas, trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees in our county increase property values and enhance the vitality of our county's business areas. And whereas, the steps we take to protect our natural environment through education partnerships and positive actions should be encouraged in Pasco County. And whereas, the citizens, staff, and elected officials of Pasco County are committed not only to the protection and preservation of our trees, but also planting additional ones. And whereas, in the mission of Keep Pasco Beautiful, to improve Pasco County by engaging the community in sustainable efforts to reduce litter, promote waste reduction, and encourage beautification, and whereas, there will be tree distributions on January 17th, 2025, in East and West Pasco County, where citizens can receive a native tree to plant. Funding for these tree giveaways is provided by Keep Pasco Beautiful and the Florida Forest Services Urban and Community Forestry Grant to promote and enhance local participation in Arbor Day activities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares January 17th, 2025, as Arbor Day in Pasco County and encourages all Pasco County citizens to join in efforts to plant and preserve trees in all its diversity, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 14th day of January 2025.
I'll take a motion?
Move approval. Speaker.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is one of my favorite things. I'm so glad we're back giving out more trees in this county. So I'd love to hear from you guys. And you know what I would like? I know some of you have been with this organization for a long time. Yeah, so I want you to say how long you've been with the group.
Good morning. Lottie Kelly with Re World Ways, 14230 Hayes Road. I've been a board member for 25 years.
Yeah.
Either the president, vice president, or just an actual board member doing all the work of cleaning and planting. And it's something that we really believe in at Re World Ways, and something I believe in personally. So we're happy to be once again giving out our trees for Arbor Day. So it's a great thing to get people involved and plant native plants and educate, and I love it.
Yeah, and anyone else? Come on up.
I'm Lijia. I'm the Keep Pasco Beautiful Coordinator. I started as an intern in 2021. And I would like to inform you all, as you mentioned. First of all, thank you all for your support. But also inform you all, if you want more information for the Arbor Day celebration, please go to keeppascobeautiful.org. And you can see how you can register for a free tree or to participate in our two events that will have, one in partnership with the UFIFAS Extension Pasco County, Dade City. We will be having a 30-minute free tree planting workshop. And we will also have a celebration in partnership with the City of Newport, Chief, in Francis Avenue Park. All on January 17th, Florida Arbor Day, and now officially Pasco County Arbor Day as well. Thank you very much.
And what kind of trees are we giving out this year?
We have two types of tree. We have our county arborists.
Hi, Mike Woodard, Pasco County Arborist. We're going to be doing two species that are native. We have the fringe tree, which will bloom in springtime. It's a deciduous little tree. You'll see in our forests underneath all the large trees in spring, you'll get little white flowers on it. And then the fire bush, which is usually grown as a shrub for ornamental purposes, but can be a small tree with thyme, and they're both good pollinator plants and host plants for native species.
So last year, we gave some money to increase the number of trees that we were handing out. And I'd like for the board to consider a motion, someone to make a motion to add, was it $3,000? About $3,000 to add to their number of trees that they'll be handing out on both sides of the county.
Should I move? Speaker?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, so we will.
I have one question. When is your tree giveaway at Francis Park?
Francis Avenue Park is going to be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m.
On the 17th?
On the 17th, yes.
But our celebration begins at 2:00 p.m. Then there is a celebration from 2:00 to 3:00, then our tree giveaway starts at 3:00.
Okay, 2:00 to 3:00, and then 3:00 to 5:00 for the tree giveaway on 1/17.
And three experts will be on site. Is there any three questions?
And I would ask our arborist, can you quickly tell the county why trees are so important? Some of the benefits?
Well, I think the biggest one, during Hurricane Milton, my property is about one acre, and it's mostly forested. And when the high winds came through, they hit the trees first, all the trees in the groupings. And the top swayed. I had a few broken branches that were dead come off, and I had no tree damage. In the front, where I had to clear out for my home, some branches came down, some larger branches. And the gust took my well pump shed, blew it right over and damaged my well. So if I had had full trees all around my home, it wouldn't have been able to damage my well, and I would have come through unscathed. And when we have the new developments, the trees are really important. But the other thing about them is the right tree and the right place and the right care after it's planted and during planting. So one of the goals with these is to encourage people to know how to plant it right from the start. And we picked two smaller species so that homeowners can easily take care of it at home themselves and not having to call to have someone come out and pay that extra money for a large branch that gets removed. They can go out with their snippers and just take care of their little tree. They can sit out and enjoy it. And they can be underneath it still for the shade. Because as we know, summertime, it's brutal. The shade is number one. I can be out in my garden in summertime because of the shade. When I lived in Pinellas, impossible.
Whenever I go to a parking lot, I always look for the shaded spot. And I could tell you, we have one shaded spot at the county commission parking on the west side. And there's always a car in that one. I try and get there first, but sometimes this one takes it. Okay, I do not have anything to give you, so it's over there?
It's over here.
All right, guys, you wanna come down for a photo?
Yes. Okay, who's getting this? Lottie, are you getting it? Perfect, and just look at me. Keep looking. Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have another resolution, RS2.
If you are here for Human Trafficking Prevention Month, please step to the podium. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 25-094, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the month of January as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month on January 11th, 2025, as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day in Pasco County. Whereas, human trafficking is a crime against a person whereby through exploitation, an individual is compelled to work or engage in a commercial sex act through force, fraud, or coercion, thereby being stripped of their rights and humanity. Traffickers typically use multiple means to control their victims, including beatings, rape, isolation, forced drug alcohol dependency, withholding of documentation, and physiological and emotional abuse. And whereas, the International Labor Organization conservatively estimates that there are over 49.6 million victims of human trafficking worldwide, and that this crime is second only to the illegal drug trade in terms of the speed of its growth and the profits that it generates as human beings are being sold repeatedly. And whereas, human trafficking has been reported in all 50 states. Florida consistently ranks third in the nation in both the number of calls made to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, NHTH, and the number of cases identified. In Florida, in 2023, there were 680 identified cases of trafficking involving 1,172 victims, with 181 being children. And whereas, human trafficking is occurring in Pasco County. Through the Pasco County Commission on Human Trafficking, our community has united to combat its horrific crime and restore dignity to survivors by bringing together the sectors deemed critical to effectively combat human trafficking, such as law enforcement, schools, child welfare, nonprofits, businesses, faith-based organizations, survivors, and more. And whereas, despite these dedicated local efforts, more awareness, education, and advocacy are needed to eradicate human trafficking. Every resident of Pasco County is called upon to declare the exploitation of people for profit has no place in our world, and that we need to work together to restore freedom, dignity, and justice to all. And whereas, January is annually declared as National Slavery/Human Trafficking Prevention Month and January 11th as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares January 2025 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in Pasco County, Florida, and that all citizens are encouraged to participate in education, awareness, advocacy, and prevention efforts to combat human trafficking, done and resolved in regular session with quorum present and voting this 14th day of January 2025.
Take a motion?
Move approval, Speaker?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. And Commissioner Jaeger, this is yours.
So I am pleased to sponsor this resolution recognizing National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. This important initiative serves to raise awareness, educate the public, and empower individuals, families, and our community to take a stand against these horrific crimes. Together, we can strengthen our collective efforts to prevent human trafficking and support survivors on their path to healing. And I just wanna add that this group is absolutely amazing. The work you are doing in our county and all over to spread awareness is truly admirable. And I've enjoyed my time with you guys. And they're just amazing. They're great, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead, address the county.
Well, first of all, good morning. My name is Laura Henderson, and I am a lived experience expert and survivor of human trafficking. I'm also the vice chair and survivor representative for the Pasco County Commission on Human Trafficking. It is my pleasure and honor to stand in front of you this morning on behalf of the commission to say thank you and express our sincerest gratitude for recognizing that January is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in Pasco County. I would also like to thank each of you for your continued support of the commission. Last year marked the 10th year since this commission was formed. And our very existence would not be able to thrive or succeed without its dedicated members and your unwavering support. As we continue our efforts of spreading awareness, continued education, and stronger prevention, it is imperative that we continue listening to survivors, being survivor-led, and being survivor-informed. The survivor's voice is the most important one. But we, including myself, cannot stand alone and push forward in this fight without everyone taking a stand and doing their part. Thank you again so much for your ongoing support of the commission's work. It is very much appreciated and valued. We could not do any of this without you.
Thank you so much.
Leanna? Rich, do you have anything you wanna say?
Good morning. I'm Leanna Dean. I'm the chair of the commission. And we wanted Laura to have the floor today, just as our survivor representative, just to bring focus to survivors. Everything that we do is geared towards helping them to thrive and to grow after they leave the life and to support their efforts to lead this movement. So we thought it was absolutely critical that you all hear from Laura. The value that she has brought to this commission, her input on every initiative that we undertake. When she talks about being survivor-led and survivor-informed, we live that. We rely on her for her guidance and her expertise so that we're delivering an appropriate message to the populations that we're trying to reach. So thank you very much for allowing her the opportunity. And again, for me, thank you again for all of your support over this last decade. It's really been invaluable.
Commissioner Oakley?
I thank each and every one of you for the work you've done. Y'all have been there, it seems like, forever. Y'all have been on that board running that, how long has the board been in existence?
10 years.
10 years. Long time. I was on there for my first four years. And I continue to give my support to that board. Because they not only are doing a great drive here in the county, but they actually have made a difference throughout the nation and have recognized for a lot of things that they've done. Speakers that you've sent off, and Allen, done the work he's done in the past, too. So very well done, and certainly appreciate you and support you. Thank you.
Commissioner Mariana?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all ladies for all the great work you're doing. It is so critical. It's such a big issue that's out there. So every bit you're doing is great. And I'll give a little shout-out to Kelly, that you ran a great golf tournament late year either. Last month, it was phenomenal. So hopefully we get everybody there for next year, because it was great. So keep up all your great work, if you will. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for being such an inspiring leader. And this is such an important group. And it just pains me to hear that we still have sex trafficking going on in our county. With all the awareness we've tried to bring to this issue, that it still goes on here is upsetting. I wanted to let you know, I don't know all the details, but I know at AMP Skills, which is our manufacturing training program that we help support here at the county, they've started a, well, they're a group of survivors who are starting businesses. And AMP Skills is helping them get started, and they're making things and selling them. So I'll have Tom one day come talk to us more about what they're doing. But I'd love for you to get in touch with him. I've seen some of the products that they've made, so I think they come in once a week. So it's pretty cool. All right, Lisa, you wanna give your?
Yep.
I know, they're down on the end. We have room for everybody, I think. Let's go down.
Right here. She'll get it to you.
Okay, let's see where we are.
I've covered my script, yeah. Okay, we are now on to the consent agenda. So we have an addendum, I'm not sure how this runs. So we have some additions to the consent agenda, AC 137, AC 138, AP 139, and AP 140, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So I would add that to the consent agenda, and we will look at the polls. I have C9, withdraw, C28, withdraw, C38, withdraw. So we are not pulling AC 138, I take it. We are pulling and revising C5, we are pulling and revising C33, and we are pulling and revising C47. So, I will accept a motion.
I move motion for accepting all the other items on considered agenda.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. We will take C5, Terry Pito's.
Madam Chairman, Victarius Pito's Planning Development Economic Growth, item C5 is the task order for WE Oliver P E LLC to do the villages of Pasadena Hills Financial Plan 2025 update. There's a revision to the amount for the overall cost of the task order from $246,080 to do the study to $247,030, it's a $1,000 discrepancy there. And this is all being paid for on a villages of Pasadena Hills Development Administration Review Fees.
Okay, and how long do you think that's going to take?
I believe August.
August?
Yes.
Okay.
This year, 2025.
All right, I'll accept a motion.
Madam Chair, can I see a little bit more of a presentation of it though? Just to see what exactly you're going to do? I was going to pull it myself for that.
Okay. You want to talk?
Do it now, or?
Yeah, let's do it now.
Okay. So the proposed task order is divided into five tasks, and I'll walk through each one in brief. Task one is regarding a methodology for financing, and task two is a transportation impact analysis, task three is development forecasts, task four is the update itself to the financial plan, the actual drafting of that, and then task five is the public hearing process. So, last year around May or so, the Board of County Commissioners asked the Planning Development Economic Growth Department to evaluate the performance of villages of Pasadena Hills and the MPUDs. And this was a preliminary study that was conducted that alerted the department to seek out an assessment on the financial plan. What this chart is essentially showing is that we are under-entitling properties within villages of Pasadena Hills and over-expending the land committed to those developments. So what I mean by that is, if you take Village A as an example, it'll say, "Plan, according to the financial plan, 898 units." We have approved 207 units thus far in villages of Pasadena Hills, but over on the right, you'll see that the acreage that is intended for the plan is 46 acres, but we have approved 73, so we're using more land with less numbers. Keep in mind that the original financial plan intended 80% build-out. So it's not the full 898 that we would get in order to develop the infrastructure within villages of Pasadena Hills through mobility fees, et cetera, but it would be 80% of that. Nevertheless, the column in the far right is sort of indicating the general overage in acres that is happening. So this study prompted the development of the task order to assess the financial plan. It's also a good idea to go through the financial plan after two years of higher inflation rates, which has increased the costs of road construction significantly. And part of what we're going to do in the proposed task order here is to evaluate the current methodology that's used in the financial plan that was set up back in 2008 and amended one or two times ahead of the high inflation that we had back in post-COVID 22-23. And then, if the current methodology is appropriate, we'll continue on to task two, which is study of the transportation impact analysis. If not, the consultant will provide an alternative methodology to county staff. So, one idea is to consider, you know, do we have to increase the overall density within the VOPH and the remaining land? That's one option. Another option is, do you keep the density levels where they are, and do you reduce the size of infrastructure that is currently being planned? Those are some options, some ideas that will be discussed during the financial plan update. Task two is the conducting of the traffic study regarding existing residential land uses and their trip generation. So we'll look at vehicular trips, we'll look at bicycle trips, pedestrian trips, golf car trips, all that will play into the assessment of what kind of infrastructure is going to be needed in those Pasadena Hills. Task three is an update of the development forecast. Task three also includes a workshop with the Board of County Commissioners to gain feedback and facilitate the assessment of the financial plan. So we'll be talking to various stakeholders in that part of the task, MPO, planning development, economic growth, the board of course, and various developers within the VOPH. Task four, these are the technical tasks associated with task four and what we're going to be looking at. Basically, compare the updated development forecast against adopted infrastructure plans. Are the forecasts going to pay for the infrastructure, essentially is what we're trying to get at? Update those infrastructure costs accordingly, update the revenue forecast for infrastructure financing, and develop three new infrastructure plans based on updated costs and projected revenues, so that an informed policy decision can be made moving forward, and then conduct five minimum stakeholder meetings and workshops. Finally, task five is the drafting of the actual task of the financial plan, the amended or updated financial plan, and bringing it to public hearing, to the Board of County Commissioners.
So basically, we need to, I'm so glad we're doing this, because if we don't generate the money to build the infrastructure, if that development does, then it's on us. So we need to stop and see what's happening, because if the densities aren't there to build those roads, and we don't do something, we're going to be paying for a lot of the roads, so. Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, I think there's also the aspect that Terry brought up, we should be looking at too. If the density's not going to be there, then we not need all the infrastructure to be planned.
Yeah.
When I look at the Commercial Office Employment Center, I'm not thrilled that we don't have enough of that going on. That may be something needs to get looked at as well. Do we need to help that more? Because I don't think the answer is just to build our way out of it with more apartment center. I mean, we need to look at what's going to create jobs, because you create jobs, now people are working where they live in, it actually cuts down your traffic anyway. And I will say, we've done a great job all around the county doing, getting jobs created, but I think we need more work here, and that should be a big part of the focus, and maybe David Ankle needs to be involved a little bit in the
Absolutely.
... plan for the future as far as how that can look at, what he can bring to the table, say, here's what we can do to bring more in.
Absolutely.
Because clearly, it's not just about building homes and apartments out there, we've got to get the job aspect too.
And I'll just note too, to the Commissioner's point, parallel to this study, there'll be a mobility fee study update
Right, I'll just bring that up.
... also be happening this year, that'll be coming to you all on January 28.
So which?
Which we'll consider a lot of those ideas as well.
So industrial pays no mobility fees, correct?
That's correct.
What about commercial?
Commercial does pay mobility fee rates, they are subsidized however, to a certain degree, off the top of my head, I don't know what that is, but they do get subsidized, they're not 100% subsidized.
And what about office?
Office is 100% subsidized.
So, we need to relook at that, because, you know, so the residential part of our development is what's building all the roads, and I just think, I'm so glad we're looking at the impact fees as well, because I think, I think everyone needs to be paying a little bit to build out the roads that we need, or we're going to be in trouble. Okay, anyone else? All right, approval of C5?
There's a motion to be sent.
You have? Are we under discussion?
Did you make the motion?
I just made motion, I didn't vote before.
Okay, well, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, C3, C33, excuse me.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair. My name is Alex Parnes, County Surveyor, C33 belongs to me. There was a very, very small error that was caught on the agenda memo, went through all of our eyes and missed the review, and thank goodness the clerk's office caught it. So all of the documents have been updated, already delivered this morning, and so we recommend pulling revise.
Will be approved? Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, C47.
Good morning, Commissioners, Paula Ricalda, Support Services, we're correcting Governor Sarah on the memorandum, it should have referenced fiscal year '25 and not fiscal year '26.
Oh. Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, so we are not going to have R50, because Bill is out sick today, but we are going to go two minutes early to R48. No, I did the consent agenda before that.
Good morning, Board, Madam Chair. I am Chuck Carden, I am the General Manager of Tampa Bay Water, your regional water supply authority. With me today is Warren Hogg, who is our Chief Science Officer, and he's going to talk a little bit later in my presentation on one of the projects, the Eastern Pasco Well Field Feasibility Study. As you know, currently Commissioners Oakley and Mariano sit on our board, and they're doing a fabulous job. It's a tough job, you're balancing Pasco's needs with the needs of the region for water supply, so they're doing a great job, and I know Commissioner Starkey and Commissioner Waitman has served previously on our board. Tampa Bay Water's mission is simple, it's to reliably provide clean, safe drinking water to the Tampa Bay region now and for future generations. We were formed in 1998 to end the decades-old water wars, and to reduce groundwater pumping that affected the surrounding environments. We are a nonprofit special district of the state of Florida, and we provide water to more than 2.6 million people through our six-member governments, that includes Hillsborough County, Pasco County, Pinellas County, Newport Ritchie, St. Petersburg, and the city of Tampa. We blend water from three different sources, that is the groundwater, surface water, and also from the bay, the seawater. We have 163 employees, and we charge a wholesale rate to each member, the same, it's $2.62 per thousand, which is a little more than a quarter of a penny per gallon. Pasco County is budgeted this year to purchase from us almost 38 million gallons a day, which is about 18% of our total system demand. Since my last update to you last year, we've been working hard to address new water quality parameters, also meeting the region's short-term water needs, and also looking at the longer-term growth issues and needs. This graph represents the total amount of water we delivered for the fiscal year '23 versus fiscal year '24. And as you can see, they're very close in numbers, and it does make you think about that with the drought that we had last year, and the tremendous growth, them being the same is pretty incredible. But a lot of that had to do with the district and the one-day-a-week watering restriction that they enacted last year. And so that was a tremendous help in reducing what we're, you know, our reservoir usage. In fact, the reservoir, which is 15 billion gallons, it's pictured on the right side when it's full, but it got down to 2.3 billion gallons in July, mid-July, which is never happened in all the years that I've been here. Our goal is to fill that reservoir by the end of September every year, up to 15, to be ready for the dry season coming up. So sitting there in July at 2.3, it didn't look good. And so unfortunately, and fortunately, we had a lot of rain, I understand there's a lot of flooding, and I'm sorry about that, but it did allow us to fill the reservoir up, and currently it's at 96% full right now, we've just started using it currently, and also our D cell plant, our D cell plant was down last year as well, at the worst time it was down, it is currently running between 12 and 15 million gallons a day to our system. But regardless of the source that we're using, we supply water to our members that meets or surpasses all the drinking water standards. We are taking steps to ensure that we keep pace with these new water quality standards. As you may recall, the new regulations were established for six per- and polyfluoral alcohol substances, they're known as PFOS in everyday terms, or the forever chemicals. They are now regulated, and the compliance is at four parts per trillion, in which everyone needs to be under that by the year 2029. We have completed quarterly testing events starting last year with our members, we wanted to find out if PFOS is present in our regional water supply and to what extent. The data that we've collected shows that there's two primary areas in our system where we are right at the four parts per trillion, or just below it, or just above it, and those are at the Brandon Wells in the Lithia area, and also at our surface water treatment plant in Brandon. We have hired a consultant, and we're working with them on a report to be presented for recommendations to our board later this year. As our region continues to grow, so does the demand for water. So we're developing new water supplies to come online by the year 2028, and as well as we're looking at the 2033 timeframe. We are working to expand the surface water treatment plan by about 10 to 12 million gallons a day, and the expansion is currently in the design phase, we are hopeful going to construction over the summer, and the project completion is for the year 2028. At the same time, we are also designing a new South Hillsboro Pipeline. The pipeline is 26 miles long, and it can provide water from our regional site to the southern Hillsborough County region. The project is broken into two parts, Segment A and Segment B. Tampa Bay Water is responsible for Segment A, and Hillsborough County is paying for Segment B. The pipeline is also scheduled to be complete by the year 2028, and it will be able to provide an additional 65 million gallons a day of regional water to that area. But it doesn't stop in the year 2028. This is a process graph of what we follow when we need to expand our system, and it typically takes about 10 years to complete, and it includes the four steps shown on the graph. We have finished updating the long-term master water plan last November, and several projects are being moved into the feasibility program, which is the burnt orange phase on the graph there, as you see. Last November, our board also approved seven projects that came from that master water plan, they're shown here on the graph to be studied further in the feasibility stage. The projects are ordered from the north to the south, and you can see they are spatially diverse, and they also are using differing supplies, including diverse, and they also are using differing supplies, including fresh groundwater, brackish groundwater, surface water, and additional seawater. We have just recently started the feasibility studies on these projects, and those projects that are shown to be technically feasible, environmentally sound, and economical, will be recommended to our board in the timeframe 2027, 2028, to meet the, the, the demand timeframe post-2033. And now, at this point, I will turn it over to Warren, and he will talk to you a little bit more about the Eastern Pasco Wellfield on here, labeled as A. Warren.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to update you this morning. As Chuck mentioned, the master water plan update yielded some projects for us to evaluate, and for that, we need to perform feasibility studies. We need to see which ones are technically, economically, and environmentally sustainable for our system before we recommend any projects to our board. We have started feasibility studies on all of these projects, and that gives us more certainty before we make recommendations to the board on the yield, the permitability, the cost, and any environmental issues related with a project. And through the feasibility studies and the data we collect, it could identify fatal flaws that pull one or more of those projects off the table completely. As I talk about the East Pasco Wellfield Project, I would like to, I'll be talking about an estimated yield, but please understand that's an estimate at this point. Until we complete the data, data collection and analysis, we don't know what that firm yield might be, could be higher, could be lower, and we could find a fatal flaw that pulls it off the table completely. That's the one, thank you. For the East Pasco Wellfield Feasibility Study, we are exploring the potential option of a fresh groundwater or a brackish groundwater wellfield in Eastern Pasco County, could be individually or could be in combination. At this point, we believe the estimated yield to be about 9 million gallons per day, but based on testing and analysis of the aquifer, that could be higher or lower, we won't know until that data is collected. The study includes drilling some test wells and monitor wells, and coring down into the aquifer to find out what the water quality is, the water quantity, and so we have data that we can model the response of the aquifer to pumping levels. In order to do that work, Tampa Bay Water needs to, needs to obtain property. We began our property search in Eastern Pasco County in an area where we believe that fresh or brackish groundwater may be available, and pumping from that area would not influence the Hillsborough River groundwater basin. Our site selection looked for areas that are protective of the environment, protecting of the cultural, natural resources of the area, could be constructed in an economical way, and also is supporting the regional mission of water supply. We reached out and polled 270 citizens for their input as we started the process, we did that back in July, and we had 158 responses. We asked the public to weigh different criteria, to see what was the most important for the community, and ranked those options or those criteria, one to four, with one being the highest. We took their feedback, which said environmental protection is the highest criteria that should be considered. We gave this feedback, the criteria, and the weighting to our consultant, Black and Beach, who performed a property search in the area of public and private parcels. The county property that's on consideration today on your agenda ranked very high in the criteria search using these weights and ranks. The parcel in bright green up in the upper left-hand corner of this map is the county-owned parcel that's subject to this board discussion and vote today. These are the public in green and the private parcels that were considered, and in consideration of this, the use of the county-owned parcel would expedite our feasibility study, and will help to reduce the overall cost of that study. If the agreement, Eastman Agreement for this parcel is approved by the board today, we would begin to mobilize in the first quarter of this year to drill test wells and monitor wells, so we can see what the actual performance of the aquifer would be in this area. We would perform those aquifer performance tests, or pumping and monitoring tests, on the freshwater part of the aquifer in the fourth quarter of this year, and the deeper brackish part of the aquifer would be about the third quarter of 2026. We have the aquifer performance test using these new wells scheduled for the third quarter of '26, and then we would analyze that data and bring it back to the public and the board for consideration and review. We should have the final feasibility study report for this and other projects completed by the second quarter of 2027, so that we would have more certainty with all of the remaining projects for our board consideration in late 2027. At the request of Commissioner Mariano, we held a public meeting on December the 4th at St. Leo University for citizens in the area. We, we met, and we had good attendance, it was about 60 participants, many of the people spoke, or they left us written comments. Their main concern was development and growth in the area, and they, their understanding was that this project was a foregone conclusion that would become a project. But we believe after the public meeting, we were able to give information that helps them understand Tampa Bay Water's mandate to meet your and our other members' demands 24/7, now and in the future, and also that this is only a feasibility study. No projects have been selected, and that timeframe for decision would be later in the year 2027. We will continue to meet with the citizens and provide input for them and to them. We will have another public meeting as we have results of the drilling and testing and feasibility study, well before our board considers any projects in late 2027. I'll turn this back over to Chuck to conclude.
Thank you, Warren. So, as we close, just to let you know, we're very busy at Tampa Bay Water. We take our job very seriously, providing clean, safe drinking water to, to everybody. It's worked since 1998, 26 years, and we've been a very, very big success, and so I'll close there, and, and we'll be happy to take questions.
Okay, Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide showing the usage of all the areas? Perfect, thank you. And by the way, I want to, I would thank you for listening and, and calling that meeting together, it was very important for the citizens to hear it, get it up front, so thank you for doing that. So, on the usage slide, it shows who's using what water, Newport Ritchie's pretty low, Tampa's low, but 2043 they're going higher. Can you explain why they're going to go higher?
Well, currently in the arrangement, they are allowed to self-supply 82 million gallons a day. So, as you go out, the green shows the year 2043, that shows them tapping out of their 82, which is in the next couple of years, the next two, three years, they'll be no more than 82, they'll have to buy all of their water in excess of 82 from us. So, that's what that shows on that graph. In the year 2043, they will be buying quite a bit more water than they are currently.
Okay. And right now, at the Howard Curran Plant, they're trying to look at doing something with that water? Is that like an ejection well that they're talking about down at the aquifer?
I don't know if they've gotten that far. They've done several different concepts over the years. They, they have about 50 million gallons of highly-treated reclaimed water. Currently, they pipe it, and it is going out into the bay. They, they've been always looking to do something else with it. And also, there's Senate Bill 64, that was passed three years ago, that's already kind of, that's going to stop by the year 2032, I believe. They have, every one of us have to stop supplying water into the surface water bodies. So, they are looking at different things. I don't know about the deep well, I don't know the details of that, but they are currently looking at that. At Tampa Bay Water, as a part of our master water plan, we do have a development alternatives concept, where we have recently started meeting with the members, looking at their inventories of the reclaimed water. How much do you have into the future? And we are working together to try to figure out, maybe there's something else we can do with it as, as a region, as a project, a regional project. So, we haven't got, you know, very far with it, but that, we are looking at what we can do with reclaimed water with all the members.
So, way back when, 20 years ago, when I first elected, I went to a chamber workshop, and we were talking about the Howard Curran Plant dumping 50, 60 million dollars a day, granted.
Not dollars, gallons, MGD.
Was that?
You said dollars, but I know you meant gallons.
Thank you. So, all that water going in there, I says, isn't there something better we can do, especially with what happened up at Crossbar, get the water up there, and maybe that would work with replenishing that even more so. Now, since that, we did the 4G project, which gets it a part of the way. I still, at that time, still today, want to see that carried up further. At the time, the mayor said he was going to try to do something else with it, maybe go to Eastern Hillsborough to go.
Yep.
Hasn't developed, and we pushed that, even at Tampa Water, to try to go. So, when I look at all that, if you would go to a couple more slides with the project sites that you've, we've selected, and I think it was Commissioner Oakley that might have mentioned it first.
That one.
That was a brilliant idea, about looking for a reservoir in the Zephyr Hills area. Now, with the storms that we've just had, and from what I've learned from our own staff working with possibly Swiftmud coming up with the Army Corps, there was a project that was going to be done years ago. I don't have all the details to it, but I know our team is going to be working on it in the future. It's not on this list, and I suggested we get something like this on the list, and I will tell you, at this moment in time, I think it probably would be like one of the top priority projects that would be done. You heard the lady talk about how she was flooding out, she had her mother here today. I get that story all over Zephyr Hills, even before the two last hurricanes hit us, driving through Zephyr Hills, you had water here, water here, it was tough to move around all the way through. Those people are suffering. Knowing that project is out there, I think, and, and I'm a bigger fan of the surface water treatment, like the Howard, the CW Young Plant has been phenomenal, and again, we had a big hurricane that came through, and we were able to get the water to replenish. Now, I wasn't as scared as maybe some, because I just figured the storms were coming, but I, I knew the way it's designed, that plant's going to be high at this time of year, and it's going to get lower as we go. By the end of summer, it showed with a few storms, a little bit of rain, it's going to get filled back up, and it works for a great little stormwater project. I think we should be working on that as a top priority project, rather than working on this wellfield. I think there's just so many opportunities. And we had a gentleman from like up at Disney World, we had a previous meeting when all the flooding was going on, Commissioner Oakley, we were there for that too, and when they were going, you listen to people about all the flooding, about what can be done. And as they set up in Orlando with Disney World, they did so many things to prevent the stormwater, you never heard about Disney World flooding out any projects. Same thing, thing could go right here. And I think that project, being the Army Corps has got it on the books, it's already laid out, is something that I think Tampa Water, with Swiftmud, with the Army Corps, with us, and the cities, should be looking at that project as a top priority project compared to the rest of them. I think the great success we've had from the reservoir, we can resonate back up here, rather than groundwater pumping, which is the worst thing we can do.
Thoughts? I think Commissioner Oakley wants to speak.
Thank you for your report, and Warren, thank you for all that you had also. I'm, I'm not sure the test well's going to prove out to be a, a big thing for our water. I think another, on, on my priority list, I look at another reservoir, one very near the one we have now, it could be as much as 15 billion gallons. This year, because of the extra storms and all that extra water, we could have filled that, both of them, without any issues. The fact of it, we use, a lot of people don't realize, we use 200 million gallons a day out of the reservoir, and we also can put 200 million gallons back every day in the reservoir. So, with a lot of water flow and all that, it makes a lot of difference to have a big reservoir for that supply, and where it's at, we gain a lot of water in that area that we can pick up and put in, in the reservoir. Reservoir smaller than that of some sort, I don't, I don't believe we can take any water out of Hillsborough County, because that, that water belongs to the city of Tampa. So, if, if this other project that we were hearing about from the feds comes in with Army Corps of the bypass canal that wasn't finished way back in Lake Tino Sasa, if that was a possibility, and we had a place we could gather water for a reservoir, that would be a very important project for us, so we'd gain a lot of water. But also, deep well desalination would, would booster our way of getting cheaper desal water for, for our program, that's, that's a project we're looking at ahead. Of course, the reservoir, like the one we have, is also a project that we can do. These are very, very expensive, these are, I'm, I'm talking like they're just a few chump change or something, but the fact of it is, it's millions and millions of dollars to do these projects. And because of these projects and the reservoir, the desal, and the way Tampa Bay Water handles and maintains our water system for the tri-county, the fact of it is, the entire system works, and we've been able to provide very good water for all our customers. I know you've heard Zephyr Hills say they're out of water, well, they're out of cheap water, because Pasco County have offered them the, the water they need to back up any growth they have. And we've been on, on record of saying that to them, but they sent the message out, they were out of water. They're not out of water, they're out of water they can pump out of the ground. That's where they're, that's cheap water. So, they, we've offered them the water they need for the future. So, that message was kind of wrong, but the fact of it is, Tampa Water's doing a great job. I think we've got some great projects on the board to come forward with us, with the board, and Tampa Bay Water, and I think they will prove out. We've actually environmentally redone all the environment around our wellfields, to where there's actually a lot of water available like it was several, several years ago, before we started pumping. We do not over-pump our wellfields anymore. We actually are able, because of the desal and the reservoir, we are actually not over-pumping those, those sites. So, there's not a big change, and the water table around, and, and it affects our citizens very little. But the fact of it is, this water and the future for Tampa Water and the amount of water we can produce is way farther than what we can even think about, but we can get them down, but it costs millions of dollars. So, but thank you for your report today.
So, so, thank you so much for coming today, and Jack, I remember the discussions that you were talking about, because I served for six years on one of the Swiftmud boards, and my husband was on that seven years prior to me, and the, the Howard Curran has water discharge has been a discussion for decades, and I'm, I'm glad the Senate's forcing them to, our legislators forced them to do something with that. My, my own opinion is, I think we have very capable folks at Tampa Bay Water, and they are going to look at the best investment for the Tampa Bay area, the best ROI for the next, you know, water source, and I just look forward to the results of all of these. I know that some people are afraid that if we do this A, that means we're going to change our development pattern around, but I don't agree with that, because just because we're getting water from there doesn't mean we're going to suburbanize the area. And it would be, it, it would be interesting if there's some way, you know, we had so much flooding over here on the east side, if there was some way to redirect that water, but I can't imagine what that bill would be, but that's something to think about. Commissioner Oakley, did you guys say something more?
Yeah. They talked about all the reclaimed water, by '32, I think they've got to not pump into the bay and other places.
You don't do that here.
Pinellas County has that, Hillsborough County has that. The fact of it is, Pasco County needs reclaimed water.
Yeah.
We only have enough reclaimed water to do partially those that are on well systems, so that we can pump that reclaimed water and irrigate yards. We don't, it takes four hogs to produce enough reclaimed water. We only have enough reclaimed water to do partially those that are on well systems so that we can pump that reclaimed water and irrigate yards. We don't, it takes four homes to produce enough reclaimed water to do one home. Four houses. So we have a use in Pasco County.
We'll take Howard Current's water.
For reclaimed water, if there was a way to get it to Pasco County, I'm sure there'd be a cost to it because it costs money to get it here.
We looked at that project when I was on, on the PA Basin Board. I mean, we were, we had the money for it, but it got redirected to the, I think to the desal plant.
Yeah, there was a project back in, which you're talking about, the city of Tampa was offering the sale to Pasco and I think it was an economical decision. It was not feasible, you could not negotiate it at price. And so things have changed. Senate Bill 64 has changed a lot of things. And I have, Commissioner Mariano and I spoke several months ago and I have talked to David Allen about maybe we can take a look at that again. Part of the development alternatives, there's, there's some solutions out there maybe that we can come up with. Years ago, there was a water issue and we came together and we formed Tampa Bay Water. And so, you know, reclaimed water is not, not a major issue, but there's some counties and cities that have a lot of it and some don't and they have to take care of it. So maybe there is something of a regional solution out there. And so I'm just saying out loud, my brain has been thinking about that a little bit. We solved the water issues and so maybe at some point in the future, this could be solved in a similar fashion regionally.
Yeah. Yes.
You know, and I want to say, you gentlemen do a great job, Tampa Water does a great job looking at alternatives, et cetera, and you explore everything possible. I just think that with all the groundwater pump we have in Pasco, it should be like the very last thing on the list, not the top of the list. I think that we have opportunities to get funding for this reservoir we're talking about in the Zephyr Hills area. And I think with the Army Corps, they may, they may fund the whole thing or a great portion of it. It's a stormwater project as well as a water project. So I think there's mutual benefits around to get all these agencies together with the great work that Tampa Water's done and the region coming together. I think it would carry a lot of merit to get a lot of this funded. But again, it solves two things. Number one, you solve a big flooding issue that we're dealing with right now and we don't want to do it again. I mean, you know, years ago, Wes Pasco was on the news, every storm was coming up, right?
Yeah, Thousand Oaks.
Now, we don't get too many stories because we fixed a lot of stuff. I think there's an opportunity to fix this here in a great way and there's a great opportunity to go forward. Rather than spending a dime on doing that eastern Pasco well field, I would rather have you spend a little bit more time researching what our team already knows and what the Army Corps knows and what they suggested we should go do, work with Swift Mud, take all the money you're going to spend on A and let's go look at, take it A and move it over to Zephyr Hills and make that a new project and put that on the list. I would have voted against this before, but I didn't know of this project, it was so far down the line. If this was to be in front of me in front right now at Tampa Water, I would have went against it because I didn't know how speculative it might be. But what I know now is this is a very viable project. It's, the Army Corps has got all the history of it, it just got stopped. I think it's time to resurrect it and I think taking our A and making it to Zephyr Hills is like, I think where we should be going.
What, what is the project? Is it to a reservoir in the Zephyr Hills area? Because I, I don't know what the Army Corps project is.
Wes, not that, it's, it's the fact that the bypass canal never got completed and it actually was supposed to Lake Tenona Sassa, my understanding, and it was going to provide for some water.
What's that got to do with Zephyr Hills?
Warren, do you have any knowledge of that, Warren, or?
I do. It was a study from the Army Corps back in the 1960s. I believe it was the Four Rivers Basin Project.
Yes.
The one project that was constructed, and you're correct, Commissioner, it was not completely constructed, was the Tampa Bypass Canal. There was a concept of a reservoir for Lake Tenona Sassa to hold water, also a series of reservoirs starting, which the Cypress Creek well field was going to be a reservoir with three smaller ones going down towards the Hillsborough River. At the time, the Army Corps put their money into building the Tampa Bypass Canal and they stopped. I'm not sure the result of the other studies or why it stopped at that point, but that was the only piece that was mostly completed.
All right, our county administrator wants to speak.
Yeah, I just want to weigh in real quick on that Four Rivers project. We have actually been in talks with the Corps of Engineers to resurrect portions of that. So just, that's, that's underway right now. It's not really ready for primetime, but just know those conversations are happening.
And again, just knowing that, I would much rather have us pursue that than A.
Well, they're, I think they're fairly far along to get ready to test this one, but I'm certainly interested in that one. And then let's get the numbers and, you know.
I think the testing will prove out to tell us what's really there and actually know more about the quality of water we have in Pasco County also. A lot of water comes out of Pasco into the tri-county area and the cities, St. Pete and also city of Tampa, so.
Well, I always say that Hillsborough River water is really Pasco's, but Tampa's using it, so.
So just knowing that.
It belongs to them, we're not going to touch that.
I know. I'm just saying, it starts in our county.
It came from Pasco, though.
Yeah.
With all the water that's being pumped out of Pasco now, we have the supplier. Granted, the water flows to the cell, so it's all to be shared. We're doing a great job doing that. I'm going to say that this Four River Project, and thank you for bringing that, I was trying to think of the name I couldn't come up with, but they have looked at, it is something, it's a possibility, that should even be on this list over and above even A. And if there was a reservoir to be built along the way, so be it. If there's something that can be done up in Zephyr Hills with it, so be it, but rather than go building another well in Pasco County, I've got six, seven, six other things to do elsewhere. I'd rather see those go first anyway.
Okay, I, I couldn't let you leave without talking about trails. And we already had our discussion on the orange belt, but Jack and Ron, you might, Ron, you might recall, when I was on Tampa Bay Water.
I do.
And, and you were talking about this new line going in in southern Hillsborough County. I just want to remind you that your corridor makes for a wonderful public purpose if you put a trail on top of it. Whether it's paved or not paved, it allows for the public to go through some pretty, some pretty urban suburban areas in a corridor that will have a lot of investment. So I hope someone over there is working on that.
Yes, we heard that back in the days of the planning and our hopes are to incorporate that where we can on the, on the route. So that is very much part of the planning and the development of that pipeline.
Excellent.
It is a very congested area.
Yeah, which makes it a great corridor.
Yeah, I went through that area in the early 2000s in my early career and, and here I am back and branding. So they're going to be very happy to see us through there, but it's, it's a needed line. And if we can do anything to help out in that regards with trails and everything, we will do so.
Excellent.
I think it'd be beneficial for a lot of citizens in that area.
Yeah, because it's, there's no other way to get one there.
Yeah.
So it's a good, you know, they're going to have some disruption and I'll get something really good out of it, besides better water pressure.
Yep.
All right, thank you so much. If there's no more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I think, let me see where we are. Forty-nine?
Yes.
R forty-nine.
Good morning.
Who's this guy?
Oh, yeah.
Good morning, Board.
Oh, yeah, we have that.
Chair Starkey. We, oh, David Allen, Utilities Director currently. That changes here shortly, but you know, the past presentation by Mr. Hart and Mr. Hogg from Tampa Bay Water kind of spilled into this item here, so I'm just going to briefly present this for your consideration today. Again, this is a temporary construction easement that would allow Tampa Bay Water to move forward with drilling two exploratory wells in the East Pasco area. And a couple of things I do want to clarify, I know in the staff memo, it talked about growth in East Pasco County to, this project would help support not only just this project specifically, but the menu of projects that Tampa Bay Water has outlined previously. And for us in Pasco County, when we're, we're talking about East Pasco County, that's really kind of the area just to the west of Date City and Zephyr Hills. So our Wiregrass, Epperson, Maradas, Village of Pasadena Hills, Two Rivers, that's really where our foreseeable growth is happening right now and that's where the supply projects would really support the growth in those areas. And then secondly, I just want to mention that again, this is a temporary construction easement. The data is important for Tampa Bay Water as well as Swift Mud to get additional data in this area. There's not a whole lot of groundwater data, particularly in the deep Florida aquifer. And the results of this investigation will help decide whether or not this is a viable solution or long-term water supply alternative. Could very well be that other projects would rank higher in this process, but again, I think that the information gathering, the information is valuable, not only for today, but also potentially further down the road in the future.
So is that site, the 300 acres that we bought right when I was becoming Commissioner in 2012 for the Lakouchi, it was for a wastewater treatment facility and we needed like 30 acres, but the seller wouldn't sell a portion, so we bought the whole thing. Is that that 300 acres?
Yep.
Yes.
It's on Christian Road and the 301.
I, I know Commissioner Schrader, before I took office, drove me around that area, but I, I don't remember where it was. Okay, so we don't need a mo, do we need a motion?
Yes.
We do need a motion.
I move.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, thank you. Now we will go on to R fifty-one, so just stay right there. Oh, no, it's not you. Wait. Oh, I thought they were coming up to the podium.
They threw me off as, as well, so. Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. So before I get into the, the confirmation request, I, I did want to take an opportunity to publicly thank Mr. J.P. Murphy for serving in the interim role as Assistant County Administrator over Development Services. It certainly was a time of transition. In fact, that entire branch, I feel like since I've taken this position, has been in a state of transition. And so we're, we're looking forward to, you know, rectifying that. But JP kept a steady hand on, on the branch during that transition as well as provided exceptional leadership and innovation through two major back-to-back hurricanes. He, he has returned to his Department of Building and Construction Services where, where the structure is now set up to allow him to lead, so the chains have come off over there. And actually, as, at this, as we speak, he is working very, very hard to not only help us comply with the law, but help get people back into their homes as quickly as possible as a result of these storms. So at this point, then I'd like to.
Mike, I could?
Yeah, certainly, sir.
I just want to say, you know, I worked very closely with JP and I know we, we all did. He was a, he is a great man, I'm glad he's staying with us and I know he'll do great things down the road for us too, but I just want to give him a shout out. But it didn't matter what the situation was, whether it was a one-on-one intense conversation or a civic associate or whatever, he was there working with the people, trying to get, get things going. So the work he did for the county is greatly appreciated. I'm glad he's staying with us and we're going to keep on moving, you know, just do some great things together. So I'm glad that that's all going on too.
100%. Thank you, sir, appreciate that. So Mr. David Allen, of course, is a familiar face, currently our, our Utilities Director. He is often known in Pasco circles here as having an ability to lead, think strategically, as well as has a great reputation for being a collaborator. And that reputation has followed him through the development community. The Development Services Assistant County Administrator is a role that I typically like to look outside to get feedback as well. We don't typically do that as, as a rule, but with Development Services, because of the impact into the development community, we want to bring folks in. David enjoys broad level support from, from those in the development community as well as the team members that, that went through the interview process. As you know, he's a professional engineer with over 30 years of experience. He's served in utility director roles. He's also served as an Assistant County Administrator in other jurisdictions and even, I think, an interim city manager, I think, at, at one point in time too, during, during the course of his career. So I have the utmost, when I, when I hired David originally, two years ago, we, we never really had the opportunity to work closely, but we, you know, I knew that this, this would be a person that we would eventually want to bring forward in a role like this in, in the county. And so again, I'm, I offer him up and appreciate the Board's consideration for his confirmation as our next Development Services Assistant County Administrator.
We approve.
Second. I'm under discussion. I, I also want to say, I really, where's JP here?
He's busy getting people back in their homes.
Okay. I really enjoyed working with JP. I thought he did a great job. And congratulations to you. I'm sure you do a wonderful job too. And with that, I would, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say, with, with, working with David too, I've worked on David many projects. When we had that project, Ranch Road, trying to get that pond dug out so it didn't flood during the storms that were coming up, he was great to work with, Branford, Jason, the whole team. They worked together to make that happen. And then even after the fact, the other ponds that DEP was like fighting us on, even with all that was going on, David still worked with DEP to go through, and Swift Mud, to go through and be able to take out the bad stuff that was in, in the aquatics that were in there for the vegetation, chop it over. And I was just sitting with DEP to hopefully get that project done where we can then take that whole two and a half extra acres of land where the water can percolate and put those people in great shape. Working with him on many complex things we've had, he just, he gets into it, he studies it, we get the well water, I've been coming up later on today, he jumped into that. So I, I think he's going to do a phenomenal job for us. I'm, I'm excited for it as well.
With that, I'll call a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. So, so thank you, Commissioner, for the support.
Yeah, I'll let you say a few words.
I just wanted to say a couple of words real quickly. First, I want to thank Mr. Carvalho, County Administrator, for, for considering me for this position and, and bringing me forward as a recommendation for this, this role. I, I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the team that I had in Utilities. I think, you know, my success is really based on the team that I have working for me and I, I really want to stress that in terms of, you know, I'm kind of the face or maybe the, the, the front man of a band that has no talent. I can't play any of the instruments, but, but that's who, who everybody associates with. So, so I think it's important to mention that. A couple of other things real quickly, you know, I'm, I'm really excited about this role and opportunity. I'm, I'm really looking forward to strengthen, strengthening the relationships I've already established, both externally and internally here at Pasco County, and looking forward to developing new partnerships within the community in this new capacity. And then lastly, I do want to acknowledge, you know, you as the Board, your mission, vision and values for this county, to make Pasco a premier county. I'm really looking forward to help enhance that and bring that forward in my new role with, with the new team and looking forward to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to miscellaneous business and it says here to start with Commissioner Mariano. I don't know why, but I'm going to switch from my agenda here and go to Commissioner Oakley.
Well, I actually don't have anything, a lot to bring forward, but I would like to say something with, with all the issues and fires and problems we have on the west coast of the United States and first responders are out there each and every day. I would like, I know that we thank them for all they do, even, even their first responders, but I also want to support our first responders and all the work they did here when we had flooding and all those issues and they're putting their life on the line to go out and save people in flood and all that. But, you know, thinking of the sporting of their first responders on the west coast for fires, we're, we're real grateful for first responders here in Pasco County.
Agreed.
That's all I got.
Commissioner Whiteman.
Thank you. Similar to Commissioner Oakley, not a whole lot, just signed for a FUD 2025 and under the Board leadership of Chair Starkey and your, you know, new committee assignments. So thank you and look forward to a good year with everybody.
Commissioner Yeager.
Okay, we're doing Commissioner, right?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a slide, please? So there was a bunch of us there for the prayer about breakfast. That was amazing and we had a good guest speaker.
Michelle's mom.
Next slide, please. So we had, we had a, we surprised the senior center, the two different senior centers along with Kathy Pearson with Santa Claus and we sang Christmas carols and gave out candy canes and it really made their day. Some, some of the elderly, they said their family doesn't celebrate Christmas, so that was their, that was their Christmas. And those two, the cute little kids in the picture, Kathy's grandkid.
Ah.
Next slide.
They're not in Disney clothes, what's wrong?
No, so we had a, like a Christmas event out at Moonlake where we fed 250 families and the parents got to go shopping. So that was, that was an amazing event blessed by the community. And Metro Ministries, Ryder Gaston, Grace's Food Pantry, we had the River Ridge basketball And Metro Ministries, Ryder Gaston, Grace's Food Pantry, we had the River Ridge basketball team there helping for a gazillion hours. And this was Tunnel to Towers, this was my first Tunnel to Towers event, and it was so emotional, I couldn't stop crying, and I was pleased to offer their CO for them to their house, so that was an amazing event. If you've never been, I encourage you to go to one. So that's all I have for District Four.
Very busy. Commissioner Mariano.
All right, so I'm not sure what the agenda was, moved me up there, but it's okay.
I know, I think they'll fix that.
Must be important.
Well, so I want to address in public comment today, I think we're unfairly shot at, myself included. You know, Pasco County changed from being part of, let's say, the nature coast, it's all natural, we rebranded ourselves to-
Yes.
-the Sports Coast. When I look at Hernando County, I think they made themselves the Adventure Coast, so I don't know what changes were, where the offense was, but I want to say this Board, I think, has done a phenomenal job working on the restorations up and down the coast, but not only that, the water quality effort that we put in. And frankly, I'm very proud of the Regional Planning Council, and now I'll be the Estuary Chair. I think it means something that I'm actually doing something for the environment, a positive way to bring eight and a half million dollars to go get some things done for water quality. So I think what we're doing, and working closely with Fish and Wildlife, to actually improve where we've actually improved the water quality so much, we went from 10 days to 40 days. And I will tell you, the only time we've had any issue with the scalping season is the dredging was done on the Anclot River-
Yeah.
-that had some things that spewed up to the bottom, that's the only part.
I thought that, I thought the same thing.
So that was like, so misguided, the statements that were made today, so I just want to make sure I address that and cover with you. Now, I did say way back when, when they wanted to make us part of the Aquatic Preserve, what it was going to do to parts of our coast, and one of them was very key, was down in the Leisure Beach Channel. That channel goes out just to the end of where the development is, it stops. If you're at low tide, you cannot use that channel because you can't get out, so it's almost useless. So those people find their way to go across, to go to the north, to get to Hudson Channel. Marcus 12 and 13 would allow a straight shot going right into what fronts up in front of Lonnie Lee, getting out to Hudson Channel, and that would actually minimize the impact. Because if you look at all the props cars, and I can tell you, you can talk to many, many people, we've heard about them before, all the props that get torn up, running through there, when they're tearing that up? They're tearing up either seagrass or dirt or whatever. If you put in a five-foot depth channel, you can actually replant it like they did it in Homo Sassa, but they did a great job at Kings Bay, and they brought all sorts of sea life back. And we get that opportunity coming down, up and down the coast, so when I want to pull out us from the Aquatic Preserve, I want to get it to where the parts are that we need to, to go forward, so we could do improvements like that, that'll improve the life of our citizens that like to go out and boat. I mean, let's go take care of the humans at the same time, when we do this water quality improvements, when we do these channel restorations, and we, if we can get that other channel done, which we need to get out of the Aquatic Preserve, it'll improve water quality as well and provide more seagrass. So I don't want you to be afraid of what she was saying, it's very important, Leisure Beach people, to get that done, Signal Cove will tell you the same thing, they both share it, so I'm going to go real strong with it, but I don't want you guys to be scared of what you heard this morning, because it was completely off-base. And I want to say, I want to reach out to like JP, David, Mike, Jason, they have been so phenomenal working through these storms, getting people back in their homes now, making the steps forward, and I'm going to put out to Kevin Guthrie, who I think that, I hope Donald Trump's listening, but I think he should become the head of FEMA-
I think it's happening.
-what he could do out there would be phenomenal, and hopefully that'll, that'll help us and help the whole nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mariano. Not superintendent. I brought back my school board days. County Administrator.
Keep that job. First, you know, on that note, I would like to thank the Board for approving Addendum Item 138, that was consent item, that was an emergency road access response kind of team there, and that was with the State Department of Emergency Management. We, Pasco County will be one of three agencies in the state with this capability and ability to go in and do quick road clearing, advanced search and rescue with our team. So again, I think this, again, makes us premier, brings positive precedent-arity to Pasco County, and again, will show us as an agency leaning forward. So just appreciate, yes, Mr. Guthrie's trust in Pasco County to deliver those services to the citizens of the state of Florida. Just real quick, you did have in front of you a laminated copy of the strategic plan. Again, we're about a quarter behind on this, simply because this was adopted in October, and then we got, wow. So these are here, they're out there for you. Just know that the implementation is formally working here, and we'll be integrating these elements into our day-to-day work. So more to come on that, we'll be discussing that with the team tomorrow, and more importantly, how we're going to measure, measure and report out on progress towards that plan. The big item that I wanted to mention, and we've talked about it, and we still continue to get information, as you are aware, and it will be formally announced tomorrow, Pasco County is a direct recipient of an amount of $585,704,000 from HUD. This is a direct allocation, and I want to, that's special, and I'll tell you why that's different, because most of these allocations are given to state agencies to then distribute and run. The fact that it's a direct allocation means that we actually can access these funds quicker, and we're able to put them to good use. There are some restrictions, of course, it has to tie back to the natural disasters, so Helene and Milton primarily on this, and they generally have to benefit low and moderate income individuals. Marcy and her team, and again, I would be remiss if I did not thank Marcy for her effort to call this to our attention. You may recall a very small letter that we had asked the Chair to sign at the time. We, I thought it was going to be a $250 million letter, and gave it a 50/50 shot of going forward. Never did I, would I have imagined 600 million coming to our county in terms of a direct allocation, but I'm glad Marcy brought that forward to us and helped us, and thanks to Ralph and the team for working through legislative focus to really kind of bring this across the finish line. So we are developing an internal administrative structure on how to manage this, and it will be probably kept a little closer to my office in order to keep tabs on that, but we're a lot of, a lot of moving parts. So we are working on a one-page summary for your offices, so you can work with your constituents, and so that you know what qualifies and what may or may not qualify, but we'll be setting up individual meetings with you in pretty short order, because we have to have an action plan put together within the next few months on this. And it will require public meetings, stakeholder engagement with folks across our community, because this is an investment in our, in our community here in Pasco. Typical things that these dollars are used to pay for, it's used to address outlands, so that is simply, that is certainly one. Infrastructure activities, as well as economic revitalization, revitalization are some of the big buckets that those, that those dollars can be put in, and I don't want to get premature and publicly start talking about projects, because that's what the process is that we'll have to go through, and we'll get there, but we will be looking for your input, public input, and citizen input. So I'm just excited for us, Pasco County, quite honestly, I think it's the largest amount of money that we've ever been granted in our history, and we're excited to put it to good use, so thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Mike, I'm glad you're taking the approach you are. I think it'd be important to meet with the Commissioners individually as quick as you possibly can, just so we can like talk about-
I was going to suggest that.
I'm sure we've all got some good ideas, I'm sure.
Yeah, exactly.
I know that we do. So I think, and that might help you as you take the steps forward, for us where to go with it, I think, moving fast, then let's, another shout out from Marcy to actually put this forward and get this, this is amazing. It is just incredible to go forward, and it's a great opportunity for us to do some of the things we've always wanted to do, and again, help with that housing, which I think could be absolutely huge, so thank you.
One of the things I said to Mr. Carbala is that, first of all, it's, well, it's my committee at NACO that handles this money, it's the Community Economic Development and Workforce that deals with CDPG and HUD and FEMA and all those folks, and we can, I really feel we can thank NACO and all the work that they did during the COVID era to be, to convince the higher-ups that it is okay to send money directly to some of the counties. And, you know, they do it by population, and so that, that has opened the door for direct deposits to us, and I think that I have not heard anything yet negative about how the money was spent with these, with these counties and the responsible, and the very responsible way that we all engaged in our communities with the federal money. So I actually thanked the committee during our national call last week, and have suggested that if there are any questions or any issues, that we use NACO, you know, those guys are lobbyists, actually, to make sure that we know all the rules and what the, you know, how far the boundaries can go, and if we have any issues. And I know Lee, I know you've been talking also with Lee County, because Lee County got some of this money last year.
Yeah, Lee County received about $1.1 billion after Hurricane Ian, in terms of direct allocation, and they actually have a phenomenal website, we will be looking to model a lot of our activities off of, a lot of lessons that Lee County has learned, and so yes, we're in touch with them and other communities as well. And again, Marcy's team is doing, is doing great work, assembling things right now, and we look forward to making it happen.
And I too have been watching the California fires, my cousin lives in Pacific Palisades. As we were sitting here, I just got a text that her building's probably going to, her condo did not burn down, but the building was damaged, and they're probably going to condemn her building, so she has, has lost, you know, they've lived there for, I don't know, 20, 30 years, so-
They've lost thousands of homes.
Yeah, it's heartbreaking, heartbreaking, but it makes me grateful for how we, how we deal with disasters, and maybe it's because we go through it almost every year, that we are so well-prepared, but it is, it's, of course, I don't, I'm not going to cast any blame on, on why and how and whose fault anything was. I will say that Catherine Barker, who's the Chair of LA County, is a friend of mine, she's very involved in NACO. Do you know Catherine? Yeah, so it was great to see her up there, and she's invited President Trump, President-Elect Trump to come visit California, and I know our hearts and prayers go out to them. It does lead me to a question, and I meant to ask this to you, Kathy, this morning. I'm just curious, I saw them, you know, a lot, a lot of sites are pushing the Red Cross to donate to the Red Cross, and I'd asked this question earlier, during our efforts, I know, I know Red Cross made a big push to collect money to help our citizens here in Pasco County, and I just, I just don't know what they did, so I'm very curious if we, I used to be a Red Cross Board Member, but I'm curious, how, how did Red Cross help our community? And I know I did see United Way out there, United Way was providing a lot of meals for our people that, you know, lost the ability to cook in communities, but I just would be interested if someone could ask Red Cross what their response was in our county.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can provide some information back to the Board. I know personally, they assisted with some of the shelter management during the recovery, during the recovery piece, and I did, did have the occasion to speak to some of their representatives in the EOC, but certainly we can spell out a detailed account with Kathy and Emergency Management, if that's what the Board would like to see.
Did, did you want to talk about the Tri-County for Friday?
Yeah, certainly.
Because I was going to, but I feel it should come from you.
Before we leave this topic, if it's okay, I did have drafted a letter for our federal delegation, and it's just a thank you for any work that's done behind the scenes to help bring this money to Pasco, so I do have it addressed from the Chair, so the Board would like to, I don't know if they need to vote on that.
Move approval.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, thank you. So regarding, I'm sorry, the-
The topic.
Tri-County or Chalk, thank you.
Yes, Tri-County. And then we'll break for lunch after that.
So, yes, so the Tri-County, it's been called Regional Roundtable, will be at Ruth Eckert Hall, that is on this Friday, the 17th. I understand Commissioners Jaeger and Commissioners Oakley do have a preemption event, but are looking forward to meeting with the rest of our Boards. There will be a presentation from Tampa Bay Water, not to be redundant, that's just how the, how the timing worked. There will be a brief discussion on the NPO-TPO merger, and then we're going to talk a little bit about opioid funding, and what the various counties are doing with their opioid money, so Paula Barclado from Arshak will be presenting a very brief presentation, but we'll also hear from, from Hillsborough and Pinellas County, and then probably the most, the juiciest topic will be the legislative discussion of what's, what we're doing in concert, and maybe what we're, what we're doing individually as groups for the region. And then we always like to close it out with some, with some remarks and a roundtable where all the elected officials will kind of say some things. The next one after this, presuming we keep up with this, will be here in Pasco, we will host, but I think it's a great opportunity, again, to promote regionalism and just to kind of show a united front in the Tri-County area.
Yeah, I think these are incredibly valuable. I, I would encourage you guys, and you know, we all have things that pop up on our calendar, so you can't always do it, but these are super important, so please put a lot of importance on these on your calendar, because there are a lot of things that we can do in the Tampa Bay area, working together, and this is where we have that opportunity to promote those ideas and meet our fellow Commissioners and, and work together. Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly, I think this is, of all the outside committees, this is probably the, could be one of the more significant ones for down the road, because we've never had this level of interaction before, this communication, usually you meet with one Commissioner and not the other one, now you get a chance to meet with everybody there and talk about significant projects. If you could, Mike, what I'd like you to do is, Warren was familiar with the Four River Project, I would like our team to get with them and let them incorporate that into what they may say, because I'm going to ask questions about it and make comments about it, I would like to get them fully versed to what we know, and kind of like give them prepped, I don't want to catch them flat-footed, but I think as much information as they have ahead of time might be helpful.
You know, something to think about on one of these meetings, and I think it happened one time, and it might have been on transportation, and we did it down at the port, but maybe we should consider inviting, say, City of Tampa Councilman and one or two of the other cities. I, and the reason I bring that up is, we have one city councilwoman-
Should we invite her Friday?
Huh?
Should we invite her Friday?
Yeah, let's invite at least that one, but we have one, you know, we have some folks who may not speak for their Board that they rep, that they sit on, and, and there's really not another opportunity to talk to the other members, and so maybe it would be good for regionalism if there are more people at the table sometimes, so maybe we should consider one giant, big one somewhere, and, you know, let's all put our cards on the table. Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, it's not a bad idea, but I don't want to take it away from what we have right now.
No, no, that would be separate.
Do you want to set up a something separate and go?
Separate.
So be it, but let's keep what we've got right here.
I don't know if they'd agree to it, but-
I'll have to be Barry and Bonnie at the bar to discuss that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay, we're going to break for lunch, we'll be back at 1:30.